For the Albertson's Kroger transaction. I'm Diana Bianco with Artemis Consulting and I'm a consultant working with the Community Review Board, or CRB. I'll be helping with today's hearing. I'll help with moving things along on the agenda, which also means I'll be the timekeeper. And I want to go over just a few logistics. So if we could pull up the slide, it's slide number two. Thanks so much. So just a couple of logistics, you probably can tell when you come in, this meeting is being recorded. Closed captioning is available. If you chat, only the host will see the chat comments. Also, just a reminder that turning off your camera can help with bandwidth issues. And if you are speaking today, we invite you to please remain muted unless it's your time to speak. Next slide, please. So here's why we're here today. The CRB, the Community Review Board, is here to listen and gather information. OHA staff, Community Review Board, and representatives of the entities will not be responding to public questions during the hearing. This presentation is for informational purposes only. OHA and the Community Review Board will use what we hear today to inform the review of the transaction. And we will have, I'll go over the agenda in a moment, but it's really to do those three things. High level information about the transaction, hear from representatives, and hear from community members and the public. Can we go to the next slide, please? So here's how it's going to go. We'll have a few welcoming comments. Then we will hear, we'll hear about HICMO itself and we'll hear about the proposed transactions. We'll also then have time to hear testimony from Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS representatives. Then there'll be a Q and A session with Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS using questions generated by the Community Review Board. Towards the end of our meeting today, we will have public comment and testimony. And you'll hear me say this a couple of times today, but if you want to provide public comment, we invite you to send a chat to the host to sign up. And we'll be doing those, I'll talk more about public comment, but we'll be doing those in the order in which they are received. On the public comment, we're going to ask everyone to, and I'll say this again later, limit your comment to two minutes or less. And that's to make sure we have enough time to hear from everybody. If we can't get to all comments today, we will provide other ways to provide comment by voicemail, by email. And if necessary, we have the option, the Health Authority has the option to schedule a separate listening session. So that's sort of what the next couple of hours look like and how things are going to go. So we go to the next slide. I'd like to turn it over now to Dan Kennedy from the Community Review Board. These are the members of the CRB. Dan's going to do a brief welcome. And then we will be hearing from Dave Baden from the Oregon Health Authority. So again, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Thank you very much, Diana. I'd like to join in your welcome of everybody here to the public hearing on the Community Review Board. My name is Dan Kennedy and I am a retired pharmacist. I'm also president of the Oregon State Pharmacy Association. The majority of my career, my 30-plus year career in pharmacy was spent in community retail pharmacies. So I'm very, very interested in how this pans out. If I were to summarize our interests and concerns, in one word, it would be access. I think access to pharmacy, pharmacy services is vitally important to consumers, our patients, and the communities that we serve. So I'm very, very interested in the divestiture of stores and how this deals out into the community. If any of you have had a prescription filled in the last year or so, you're probably aware that community retail pharmacy is undergoing quite a bit of pressure right now. We are concerned that there may be actual pharmacy deserts that pop up in not just rural areas of Oregon, although that is a concern, but also in urban areas of Oregon. So I'm very excited to listen to the remarks that are coming forth. And I will turn it over to Dave Baden now.
Great, thanks, Dan, and welcome, everyone. I'm Dave Baden, the Oregon Health Authority's Deputy Director for Policy and Programs. Like Dan, really want to welcome you to this public hearing for the Healthcare Market Oversight Programs Review of the Proposed Mergers between Kroger and Albertsons. This public hearing is being convened by the Kroger-Albertsons Community Review Board, which will also, which will issue a recommendation to the Oregon Health Authority about whether to approve this transaction. So a little bit about the Healthcare Market Oversight Program, or also called HICMO, which you might hear a lot today, reviews healthcare mergers, acquisitions, and other consolidation in Oregon. HICMO's charge is to ensure that any consolidation in this state helps contain costs and prove access to services and quality of care and advance equity. One of the ways HICMO seeks to advance equity is through the Community Review Board. This group of community members has volunteered to share their input and expertise to make sure that we at OHA understand the impact this transaction may have on pharmacy services in their communities. The CRB's recommendations are one of the important inputs that the Oregon Health Authority will consider as it reviews the transaction. Kroger and Albertsons are two of the largest grocery store chains in Oregon and in many places around the country. They also have more than 150 pharmacy locations across the state that account for about one-third of prescriptions filled each year in Oregon. That's what this HICMO review and what this Community Review Board is focused on today, the pharmacy aspect of this merger and the business. This is HICMO's first Community Review Board and first public hearing. Really appreciate Diana's help in facilitating, and we're really excited about the opportunity to hear from the entities involved in this transaction and from the public. So encourage you, per Diana's instructions, to, if you have, want to make a public comment to follow what she asked you to do. So with that, I really do want to thank the members of the Community Review Board for generously sharing their time, Dan, and others, their experiences and perspectives on this important topic. I know they're excited to hear from Kroger and Albertsons and from the public about this merger. And with that, I want to welcome the Representatives Kroger-Albertsons and CNS, who have joined today to answer the Community Review Board's questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dave and Dan. So here's how we're going to start. We're going to do some level setting. We are going to be hearing from Jenny Grunditz of the Oregon Health Authority, who will provide first an overview of HICMO, so we can go to the next slide. And then Jenny will talk a little bit about the transaction. So we're going to do some level setting. And then after that, for those of you who are just joining, we will be hearing testimony from Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS. I'll do those introductions. Then we will have more time, we'll have time for Q and A. And towards the end of the meeting, we will be taking public comment and input. So again, if you want to do public comment, if you want to provide a public comment, there's a number of ways to do that. We're providing an email as well as a voicemail and an opportunity today to share your input at that point towards the end of the meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenny.
Thank you so much, Diana. And yeah, as Diana mentioned, I'm Jenny Grunditz. I am a policy advisor for the Healthcare Market Oversight Program here at the Oregon Health Authority. So with the next slide, I'm going to first just give an overview of the program itself. And so this program, through this program, also known as HICMO, the Oregon Health Authority reviews proposed healthcare business deals to make sure that they support the state's goals related to cost, equity, access, and quality. By business deals, we mean mergers, acquisitions, corporate affiliations, other forms of combinations or consolidation in the healthcare space. HICMO was created by Oregon's legislature in 2021 through House Bill 2362. And the program is codified in Oregon Revised Statute 415-500 and on. The program was launched in March of 2022, so we've been up and running for a little over two years. Go to the next slide, please. So the program has three main aims. Firstly, it aims to promote transparency around healthcare deals. And one important way that we do this is by publicly posting notices and reports so that communities have information about planned transactions before they happen. We also, through this program, aim to support the state's priorities by reviewing proposed deals to ensure that they don't run counter to goals around affordable healthcare and eliminating health inequities. And thirdly, HICMO seeks to monitor and study the impacts of healthcare consolidation in Oregon by tracking healthcare deals, looking at their impacts on people and communities, and producing reports. Next slide, please. So under this program, OHA, for any transaction that is reviewed under HICMO, OHA has the ability to approve, approve the transaction with conditions, or disapprove the transaction. And if the transaction involves a health insurer, then OHA would make a recommendation to the Department of Consumer and Business Services. So that's a separate state agency that would then make the final determination. And I want to point out here that HICMO's purview is Oregon. So that means that any decision regarding a transaction applies to how that transaction goes ahead in Oregon. Next slide. So this just shows some of the key pieces of information that go into OHA's decision. As we're doing in this, for this review, OHA can convene a Community Review Board to provide a recommendation on whether to approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions. OHA also obtains a lot of information from the submissions by the companies involved in the transaction. We issue information requests and receive various pieces of information, some of which are confidential. OHA also solicits comments from members of the public throughout the review, and we use these comments to inform our analyses. And we also rely on information from publicly available sources, including data and reports. And OHA incorporates all these pieces of information when considering the criteria that are outlined in rules for whether or not a transaction should be approved. And then next slide. A little bit more about the Community Review Board. The Community Review Board is a way for OHA to get more in-depth input from members of the communities that may be affected by a particular deal. So we look to the Community Review Board members to share stories and experiences about consolidation, access to care, cost, quality, and health equity, to highlight potential risks and benefits of a transaction, and to identify additional data or information sources. Those are some examples. And ultimately, the goal of the Community Review Board, as mentioned, is to provide a recommendation to OHA on whether to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the transaction. And those recommendations may also include recommendations regarding specific conditions that should be applied to the transaction if it were to be approved. And we can go to the next slide. So shifting gears a little bit, just to give you a very high-level overview of the transaction itself. So as you know, Kroger and Albertsons are planning to merge, and they are two of the largest grocery store chains in the country, operating approximately 5,000 stores and 176 stores in Oregon under the banner names Fred Meyer, Safeway, Albertsons, and QFC. And in October of 2022, they signed a merger agreement. And under that agreement, Kroger would buy Albertsons for $24.6 billion. Approximately a year later, they announced a plan that after the merger was completed, Kroger would sell more than 400 stores to CNS Wholesale Grocers. And just this week, they announced that they would increase that number by another 166 stores to 579 stores. And of those, 62 stores are in Oregon. The reason for that arrangement, just broadly, was to address concerns among federal and state regulators that the merger could reduce competition among grocery stores. And just want to add as well that when, in the context of this review, when we talk about the transaction, we're referring to both parts of this deal, both the purchase of Albertsons by Kroger and then the sale of stores to CNS. We call this the divestiture. And also, a little bit about our review. As I think has been mentioned earlier, we focus on, we're focusing on pharmacy prescription drugs, the impact on pharmacies, and we're looking at impact in Oregon. And next slide, please. This just recaps some of the key terms of the merger and divestiture. The purchase price is $2.24.6 billion. Kroger would take on $4.7 billion of Albertsons debt. Albertsons would become a wholly owned subsidiary of Kroger. And CNS would pay $2.9 billion for selected Kroger and Albertsons stores, as well as brand names, distribution centers, offices, and other resources. And the next slide. This just has a map of all the Kroger and Albertsons pharmacy locations in Oregon. So you'll see in blue the Fred Meyer and QFC locations. Most of those are Fred Meyer. And in green, the Albertsons and Safeway pharmacy locations across the state. So there's a total of 159 pharmacies in Oregon. Those pharmacies together dispense more than 11 million prescriptions annually, which is about a third of the state total. These numbers are based on OHA's data from 2000 through 2023. And they also serve over 400,000 prescription customers annually, which is nearly half of the people in Oregon who obtain prescriptions during that time period. And bring in about 700 million in prescription sales as well. So I think that is the end of my presentation. I'm going to hand it back to Diana.
Jenny, thank you so much. I now want to welcome Representatives from Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS Wholesale. From Kroger, we have Colleen Lindholtz, who's the President of Kroger Health. Thank you for joining us today. From Albertsons, we have Anthony Del Ponte, Senior Vice President of Pharmacy. Thank you for being here. And from CNS, we have Roxanne Schwanz, Head of Pharmacy. I'm going to turn it over to Dave, who will swear in these representatives in advance of their testimony. They have about 10 minutes to share some comments, statements. And then after that, we'll go to a Q and A with the representatives moderated by Dave and Sarah Bartleman. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and again, welcome. Thank you for being with us today.
Yep, thanks, Diana. Ms. Lindholtz, Mr. Del Ponte, and Ms. Schwanz. Under penalty of perjury, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please respond affirmatively, if you could, so we can hear you.
Yes, I do.
I do.
Thank you. Diana, back to you.
Thanks, Dave. So I'm going to actually invite the three of you, however you, if you've coordinated. We have about 10 minutes to request the three of you, so we'll just invite you to jump in. Thank you.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the Oregon Health Authority for inviting me here today. My name is Colleen Lindholtz, President of Kroger Health, the healthcare arm of the Kroger Company, which is the parent company of Fred Meyer. I'm here today to discuss the proposed merger between Kroger and Albertsons. We understand the important role that Fred Meyer and Safeway play in our communities. Families across Oregon rely on our stores to provide fresh, affordable food, good-paying, stable jobs, and high-quality community healthcare services. We take this responsibility very seriously. As a health agency responsible for the care of Oregon's more than four million citizens, we respect your interest in understanding how the proposed merger will impact your families, as well as their access to much-needed prescriptions and healthcare services. I look forward to answering your questions. For me, this is personal. I've spent my whole career at Kroger. I started as a pharmacist in Ohio, right after graduation from pharmacy school at the University of Cincinnati. It's been almost 30 years. I've seen firsthand the impact that community pharmacists and pharmacies can have on the population, on our own associates, and on the communities that we serve. I worked my way up at Kroger from being a store pharmacist to the point where I'm now responsible for Kroger's more than 2,200 pharmacies and 220 retail clinics that serve more than 17 million patients annually. I became a pharmacist because I wanted to help people, help people with their health needs, their prescription needs. And as the President of Kroger Health, I'm passionate about advancing our vision to help people live healthier lives. My passion is Kroger's passion also. Kroger's focused on the holistic approach to taking care of people wherever they are in their journey in life. We believe in the preventative power of food. That's why we're focused on our Food is Medicine initiative to help people make healthier food choices that lead to better outcomes. This passion for helping people and communities is what led us to pursue our merger with Albertsons. Albertsons is an organization grounded in a purpose to bring people together around the joys of food and to inspire well-being. Through this merger, bringing together two purpose-driven organizations, we are going to deliver superior value to customers, associates, and our communities. We're so strongly about maintaining and expanding affordable healthcare solutions for our patients that we've made a series of commitments in connection with the Albertsons transaction to ensure zero loss of community health access. First and foremost, we will not close any stores or pharmacies at our stores, inside of our stores, as a result of this merger. In fact, we plan to invest $1.3 billion to enhance the customer experience and better serve our communities. Second, we will invest $1 billion to continue raising wages and comprehensive benefits for our associates while ensuring zero frontline associate layoffs related to the merger. We take a holistic approach to supporting our associates with industry-leading benefits programs that address physical, mental, and financial well-being. Since 2018, we've invested $2.4 billion in improving wages and expanding our benefits programs. This merger will allow us to build on that work. Next, we will lower prices and expand access to fresh, affordable food for customers by investing $500 million to lower prices starting on day one. Our business model is built on lowering prices and providing value to our customers, and we have a long track record of lowering prices and improving the customer experience following mergers. For example, following our merger with Fred Meyer, we have invested in stores across Oregon to provide more choices and better value to our customers. You can expect us to deliver on that and on these commitments through this merger, as we have in the past. As Roxy Schwanz will discuss, our comprehensive divestiture plan with CNS Wholesale Grocers, which we expanded this week, enables us to follow through on these commitments. We conducted a thorough process to identify a divestiture buyer that would ensure divested stores and their associates continue to succeed and serve their communities. CNS achieves that objective. CNS is a values-oriented organization committed to creating healthier communities for generations to come. Fred Meyer is a part of our Oregon communities, and we are committed to helping our communities thrive. That is why we've donated more than $6.1 million and $14.9 million meals to help in hunger in communities across the state. We've continued to support Oregon communities at a time when operating retail grocery stores and pharmacies has become more difficult. Increases in retail theft and crime has made it harder to operate in population-dense areas of Oregon. But where we've seen large, non-unionized retailers cut and run from these hard-to-operate areas, Fred Meyer has not only stayed the course, but we've leaned in to work directly with local law enforcement, community groups, and elected officials to keep our stores and our pharmacies open to customers and our patients. We are expanding access to fresh, affordable food for everyone because when customers can have fresh and choose fresh, they will have better health outcomes. Safeway shares the same commitment, and together, we will be able to create healthier, more sustainable communities throughout Oregon. Every day, our team of dietitians and healthcare professionals counsel patients who suffer from chronic diseases that could be slowed or even entirely prevented by simple changes to the way that they eat. By connecting patients with better-for-you foods in the same place that they're receiving expert healthcare, we have a real opportunity to change the way that America eats. This is the kind of care and focus on helping patients make healthier choices that we plan to expand following our proposed merger. In closing, Fred Meyer and its amazing associates have served communities across Oregon for more than 100 years. We are confident that coming together with Albertsons will allow us to build on this strong legacy and help us create an even brighter and healthier future for Oregon communities. Thank you. I'll now hand it off to Roxy Schwanz.
Thanks, Colleen, and thanks, everybody here. I really am excited to be here and the opportunity to speak to all of you. This is just a wealth of knowledge between Anthony and Colleen and myself. We have a great group of people. So first of all, I want to thank both of them. So my name is Roxy Schwanz, and I am here because of CNS. I am here to head of pharmacy, and I'd like to start by thanking the Oregon community and all of you for the background. CNS is the largest private wholesale grocery supply chain in the United States. The company has more than over 100 years of experience in the grocery business, and it provides extensive resources to its customers to support their grocery and pharmacy businesses. And in 2021, CNS determined the growth of its retail business was critical to the future success. This transaction is really a key part of that strategy. CNS views pharmacies as an essential component of retail grocery stores. Pharmacy sales accounts for more than 10% of the sales in each of those stores. And pharmacies establish an important connection between our retail store and the community it serves. Like we heard from all of you in the opening, it's very valuable to have the pharmacy within the store and maintain that continuity of care. So CNS has brought me on to run the pharmacies it will acquire as a part of its transaction with Kroger. Like Colleen, I have grown up in the pharmacy space, not a pharmacist by nature, but my family owned and operated Schwanz pharmacies in the Midwest. So I grew up in a rural community, and I started working at an early age in the pharmacies. So I have 28 years of experience in the healthcare industry, including senior positions both at Walgreens and Rite Aid. Through my career, I have formed great relationships across the industry, including those with payers and distributors, and have gained additional awareness of many challenges facing pharmacies today. The great news in all of this is I have a wealth of knowledge of folks and people, and I have the insights to link into groups and associations and pharmacists. And I brought on Nicole Leiter, who is a pharmacy by trade, to join me at CNS. She's an experienced pharmacist, and she works with the Board of Pharmacies and has been in the industry for years. She also led Walgreens USA through its acquisition of Rite Aid, which was the largest transformation program in Walgreens history. We both work together at Walgreens, and we both work together at Rite Aid. So we know together, we can build the infrastructure to support it. Together, we plan to ensure continuity of care for the pharmacy customers who shop at the stores that CNS is acquiring and to grow CNS's pharmacy business for the future. So our primary objective is really to ensure, as Colleen stated, is continuity care for the pharmacy and the customers that comes in. Most importantly, what that means is doing whatever we can to make sure that the people currently working in the pharmacy stay there. We know that frontline support is critical, and we work closely with both the sellers to ensure CNS and the needs of this pharmacist, and to bring those folks over and professionals as part of the team. So we know that the continuity of care in the faces that the patients see on a day-to-day basis will continue to be the same, so they can know and trust their pharmacist. CNS is also developing a plan to minimize disruption for employees and is considering retention incentives where necessary. In addition to its already competitive employee packages, CNS is focused on continuing to invest in its employees. Our retail expansion will provide many benefits, including enhanced career paths, new roles, the ability to train and develop new skill sets, and so much more. CNS will also build and maintain clinical services that are in place today. It will continue to have the offerings provided in the store today, vaccination services, therapy management programs, and all the other services you alluded to at the very beginning. We look to have that continuity of care, working closely with the sellers to ensure that we have everything in place prior to day one. So to encompass everything that we're learning here today is to understand that we all together partner and work together to make sure that we establish a great working relationship. I have extensive experience in negotiations with the PBMs, which is critical to the comment earlier about access. Many of these PBMs I've worked for and worked for and with and negotiated over the years, both on the manufacturer side and on the PBM side and retail side. So we are considering also as points of access, discount cards to ensure that the patients do not pay more after the transaction than they do today. Our goal in the transaction is to ensure continuity of care and to ensure access to the prescriptions that they come in today to fill. And that will be done by establishing great relationships and negotiations in these networks and price points. We've also selected a distributor, and we're establishing relationships with our distributors to ensure that all prescriptions remain the same. We've also selected a distributor, and we're establishing relationships with our distributors to ensure that all prescriptions remain the same. We have also selected a digital pharmacy vendor that we're working with, and it is the number-one largest digital vendor in the U.S. They are ready and prepared and working with both the sellers so that we have implementation on day one of the transaction to ensure that your prescriptions remain available and your patients can come in on day one. Again, we're planning to use Kroger and Albertsons prescription dispensing solutions in the short term and plan to extend the licenses for any third-party solutions currently in place at divested pharmacies. That's critical because, again, it goes back to continuity of care of the patients and ensuring that the ease of use and the training and the current staff in the stores remains there, and they also know the actual pharmacy systems. So acquiring these permits, we need to run the pharmacies are also in place. We have worked closely with Kroger and Albertsons and agreed upon a process for transferring pharmacy licensing, and CNS has collected all the information necessary to file for additional licenses. So under the terms of this transaction with Kroger, CNS will receive the assets and support it needs to be successful. CNS will also acquire in-store pharmacy assets and current inventories for the divested stores. Again, minimizing disruption for those patients coming into the store. We'll also receive historical pharmacy records, including prescription dispensing records and other patient records for at least two years prior to closing, and if needed, we've established a relationship to gain as much access to that as possible. CNS also is receiving a clone of the Albertson systems, and that means we'll be using the same technology in these stores. So again, minimal disruption is possible. CNS expects to hire additional 20 pharmacy operation staff from Kroger and Albertsons to support their pharmacy operations, and we're working closely with them on the staffing. CNS believes it can be successful with the support included in the current package, but if needed to be and difficulties arise, we are working all together to extend the services for a longer period of time if necessary. I look forward to working with Colleen and her team as we are today, and Anthony and his team as well. So I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Thanks so much. We're just at about time, and we've been chatting, but Anthony, do you have anything you want to say briefly before we move to the questions?
Diana, maybe I'll just really quickly introduce myself. I'm Tony Del Ponte. I lead Albertsons pharmacies. I've worked in the industry for quite some time. I started way back in 99 as a pharmacy technician, and pharmacy is my passion, and it's been my life for a long time. So it's an honor to be here. I'll keep this really brief. I'll join Colleen in her statement, and we can move forward. Diana, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. So now we are going to turn it over to Dave and Sarah, and there's a set of questions. We can actually, if you want to just show the slides real fast, Jen, because there's a link that folks can see. On the, it's on the HICMO website, and then we'll take them right down. But if you have questions, they've been prepared in advance, generated by the Community Review Board, and that's what we're going to go through now. So we can take that slide down. Just want folks to know, you can go to the HICMO page and see them there. Dave and Sarah, I turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Diana, and thanks to Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS for those remarks. Yeah, as Diana said, Sarah Bartman, who is HICMO's Program Manager, and I are now going to ask a series of questions. As stated, these questions have been developed by the Community Review Board with assistance from OHA staff. For each question, we will indicate if it's intended for Kroger, Albertsons, CNS, or all three. Please respond individually in turn, and there are nine questions in total, and some have multiple parts. Test-taking day, I guess. Nine questions in total. We could have about, we have about 55 minutes for this Q and A, so just please be mindful of time when responding so that we can get through the questions. So I will ask the first question, and there's multiple parts to this question. When Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS say that they have no plans to close stores, what specifically does that mean? First, do the entities commit to keeping the existing stores and pharmacies in Oregon open after the merger and divestiture? Second part, what is the duration of the commitment to not close stores, as in how many years? And C, does this commitment extend to retail pharmacies? Again, this question is for Kroger and CNS, so I will turn it to to Colleen first for Kroger.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. So Kroger has made a public commitment to not close any stores, either our own or acquired stores as a result of the merger. That includes not closing any of the pharmacies in our stores also. We made this commitment immediately after announcing our initial merger agreement, and we sought and found a divestiture buyer who shares our commitment to keeping stores and pharmacies open. CNS is also committed to ensuring frontline associates remain employed and honoring all collective bargaining agreements. We are merging with Albertsons because we want to expand our presence in grocery and pharmacy across the United States. It's a good business to be in, and it's an important business to be in. We understand and appreciate the role that we play in people's lives, and we take that responsibility very seriously. This is why we are committed to this business, and this is why we are merging with Albertsons. We have committed to zero store or pharmacy closures as a result of the merger. This is a commitment that we made shortly after the merger was announced, and is a commitment that we will deliver on.
And CNS has no plans either to close any of the stores or pharmacies in Oregon or elsewhere, like Colleen said. After the merger and divestiture occurs, it tends to actually own and operate and run all of the divested stores and pharmacies successfully. This transaction is very important to CNS' strategic shift into retail, and it needs the stores to be successful. Successful pharmacies are important to the overall business of a store and account for more than 10% of the store's total sales. For that reason, the success of the stores CNS is acquiring depends in part on the success of the pharmacies in these stores, and CNS is committed to owning and operating everything in the store, again, just like Colleen alluded to.
Great. Thanks. Sarah, I'll turn it to you for the next question.
Yeah, and actually, can I make a quick follow-up on question one before we move to question two? I heard both representatives make the commitment, but I didn't hear anything about a duration. Is there anything that either representative would like to add about the duration of that commitment to not close stores?
I'll make a comment, Sarah, first. The purpose of the merger is to grow our footprint, not shrink it. And this is consistent with our approach of in past mergers. In fact, when we think about Fred Meyer, and when we merged with Fred Meyer, we've actually increased the banners Oregon footprint by seven stores since, in Oregon, since we emerged with them, and we've done 51 actual remodels. So we are most definitely committed.
I agree with Colleen's comments, and really just again say that CNS believes it can be successful with all these stores it's acquiring, not just in Oregon, but everywhere in the USA. And I think when you look at the pharmacies overall and the closing of the big chains, this is an opportunity for the grocers to maintain and to step up and actually take on the patients. So I think it's a great opportunity here in Oregon and entire United States.
Thank you. Second question, and this question is for Kroger and CNS as well. When Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS say they have no plans to eliminate frontline positions, what specifically does that mean? Can you elaborate on, does this extend to pharmacy staff? Will CNS offer employment contracts to all current staff, including pharmacy staff at the divested stores?
Yeah, so from the Kroger perspective, frontline staff means our customer-facing positions, which does include our pharmacists and pharmacy technicians. And our commitment not only to not to eliminate frontline positions means that there will be no reductions in our frontline staffing as a result of the merger, and that includes our frontline pharmacy staff. This means that Oregon families will continue to work with and go to the trusted pharmacists that they have and that has cared for them for years. Pharmacists will remain, maintain this relationship no matter if it's a pharmacy inside of Fred Meyer or becomes a part of CNS. Another important thing that I want to communicate is that we also have seasoned leaders from the Pacific Northwest who will join CNS to ensure that these stores and pharmacies continue to operate successfully and to serve the communities as we do today.
And I second that, and thank Colleen and the team for allowing us to take on the pharmacists because that's a crucial piece of, again, patient continuity of care, just a friendly face, and making sure that it's a seamless transition. And to be successful, we need those people. We currently need them in the store that we're acquiring, and that means the current staff at the divested stores, including the pharmacy staff, the technicians. And we will extend employment offers and welcome them into the CNS family. We have training opportunities for them to make sure they feel welcome and transitional services together. We're committed to retaining the frontline employees, meaning all the employees working on the ground today. As Colleen stated, we want to remain in place. We want to employ them. We want to have a partnership and plan together. We'll also offer competitive wages, healthcare, and pension benefits to all the employees that match or exceed currently today what's in place. We also recognize that CNS needs the staff to join us as a team. Since we know patients want to continue the same pharmacists they know and they trust, they're critically important to CNS, the frontline pharmacies, we will remain in place, and those roles will continue to service the patients. To accomplish this, CNS is devising a retention plan, and we're working closely with Colleen and her team and staffing and to ensure that all incentivizations and all the support needed today is there. And we're familiar with the challenges. Colleen being a pharmacist, Tony as well, we understand what's happening in the industry. Me coming from the chain grocers as well, we understand the pharmacies and what they're facing, including Nicole being a pharmacist herself and working in the industry. We certainly have a vested interest in doing things differently so that we can maintain the pharmacist and make sure that it is an attractive place to work over here.
Thanks, Roxanne. And for, maybe as a quick follow-up on that, a similar follow-up to the first question about duration of the, sort of the employment contracts in sort of commitment to that, I recognize just saying that, you know, not eliminate anything currently, but is there any commitment around duration of those contracts?
From the CNS side, duration of the contracts is we'll have continuity, whatever it takes to maintain and keep and be competitive in that marketplace. And the key learnings are really coming from today of what currently is being done today, and that's working with Colleen and Tony's HR staff to ensure, again, we're competitive. We keep competing the same offerings. We have the pensions in place and really devising a lot of operational staffing support around these pharmacists and the staff. So there's no timeline on it because the goal is to retain and to keep them and to make sure they stay here.
Right. Thank you. So next question. When Safeway and Albertsons combined in 2015, stores were divested to Hagen. Which quickly closed stores and filed for bankruptcy? Why would this merger have a different outcome? Again, what are Kroger, Albertsons, and CNS doing to ensure a different outcome? And this question is for Albertsons, Kroger, and CNS.
Okay, well, I'll start off. While I defer to my colleagues at Albertsons and CNS for more details, I will say that the Albertson-Safeway merger was one of the situations that we studied really deeply when determining our divestiture package and selecting a buyer. That's why we prioritized finding a strong buyer with industry experience, a strong management team, a strong financial condition, and creating the right mix of stores, people, and other assets to ensure that the divested stores would continue to be successful in serving the communities. CNS looks nothing like Hagen in terms of financial strength or expertise. So I'll turn it over to Tony and Roxy to describe why the CNS divestiture package achieves these objectives.
Thanks, Colleen. I think from my perspective, CNS is a name that everyone in the industry knows and respects. They're large. They're very well-capitalized, and they're familiar with the state of Oregon, and I think all of those things are really important. I've never personally worked at Hagen, but it's my understanding from my experience at Albertson-Safeway and throughout the Hagen bankruptcy, that Hagen was a small business owned by private equity. They operated 18 stores and, you know, ended up acquiring 146 stores from Safeway. They were originally looking to acquire 22 stores, but ended up acquiring 124 more. And all of this happened in a really short span, over only a few months. And they simply didn't have the staff needed with the right expertise, particularly around grocery pricing. So they relied on outside consultants to help them develop a pricing program, and customers simply didn't respond. Prices went up, and customers went elsewhere, and quickly that led to 25% decline in store sales, which financially was extremely tough for Hagen to deal with. That led to them declaring bankruptcy a few months after the acquisition. I can hand it over to Roxy now and see to address for CNS anything further.
Thanks, Tony and Colleen. Yes, so as both of them have alluded to, Hagen and CNS are very widely different, right? CNS has been studying Hagen in 2015 divestiture as well to ensure that it does not repeat any of the mistakes made by Hagen and that we're able to run the divested stores successfully. CNS is much stronger divestiture buyer than Hagen, and CNS is one of America's largest privately-owned, family-owned business, over 100 years of grocery experience and yearly revenues of over $21 billion a year. It operates its own piggly-wiggling Grand Union stores in multiple regions in the United States, and it actually has a robust wholesale operation that supplies over 7,500 independent supermarkets, retail chain stores, and military bases across the country. As part of its wholesale operations, it already runs 45 warehouses in 40 locations. So as you've heard already, in contrast, Hagen is very small. It is an 18-store supermarket grocer in the Northwest Washington State that had just been saved from bankruptcy by a private equity firm. We are not a private equity firm. CNS is a family-owned business. Again, it is a business that looks to own and operate and continue these stores in contrast to what happened and learn from the Hagen divestiture. It has been tasked with acquiring 146 Albertson-Safeway stores. Majority of those for Hagen were in California, Arizona, Nevada, thousands of miles where Hagen was even known a brand, right? As we alluded to, a known brand is critical. Despite this, Hagen immediately converted the stores to a Hagen banner and also raised prices. I've had a great deal of experience with mergers and acquisitions at Walgreens and have done this before and understood the value of the banner as well. We've worked closely with Colleen and Tony and the team to ensure that we have the right banners in place. Unlike Hagen, CNS is sophisticated. We're a well-capitalized company. With industry experience, we have a financial strength to invest in the divested stores to keep prices low for customers and to retain frontline associates. We also have experience management team with extensive background in grocery distribution and retail. It's committed to running the divested stores successfully from day one. It also has the support of a transitional service agreement between Kroger and Albertson. We call it the TSA agreement. That, again, will ensure continuity for customers in the integration process. The divestiture package is also structured to ensure that CNS receives the necessary infrastructure, including distribution centers, offices, private label brands, subject-matter expertise from both Albertson and Kroger's, all of which are designed to ensure that the divestiture succeeds.
Thank you, and I think we're going to come back to some of how CNS plans to successfully operate in the future and a few questions. But the next question is for Kroger and Albertsons, and we would like to hear, how did Kroger and Albertsons identify stores to divest? And second, when will the list of divested stores in Oregon be made public?
Yeah, thank you. So Kroger and its advisors went through a rigorous year-long process to really scope out a comprehensive divestiture package that includes hundreds of stores, distribution centers, private-label brands, and other important assets. The goal in identifying those stores and the accompanying assets was to create a divestiture package that enables the buyer, CNS, to successfully operate the stores and compete vigorously in the market. The divestiture package is also designed to resolve any potential issues about the merger raised by regulators. While in the regulatory process, we are not in a position right now to share a list of the stores that will be divested.
Can I follow up on that real quick before Albertson's comments? You're not currently in a position. Do you have a sense of timeline of when you might expect to be in a position to share the list of divested stores publicly?
No, not at this time. I do not.
Just wanted to see if, Anthony, if there's anything that you wanted to add on this one.
If I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, well, I will move on to the next question. And this question is for Kroger and Albertsons. What was Kroger and Albertsons' process to identify CNS as the buyer of divested stores? How did Kroger and Albertsons determine that CNS would be a viable operator?
Yeah. Thanks, Dave. So Kroger conducted a robust sale process over the course of about 11 months in order to identify potential buyers with the operational expertise, the capabilities, the experienced management team, strong financials, and really a comprehensive business plan that would best position a buyer to operate the divested assets. It was important to Kroger that the selected buyer be committed to continuing to serve the communities in which the divested stores are located and to supporting the associates serving in those stores. CNS meets all these criteria. The process was undertook to identify a buyer was incredibly thorough. For example, more than 90 potential buyers were contacted and more than 50 conducted due diligence. For example, more than 90 potential buyers were contacted and more than 50 conducted due diligence. After due diligence, we received almost 30 bids. We received numerous bids in the next round, which we evaluated based on value, transaction certainty. Meaning that their ability to do the acquisition would get approved as a buyer. And as we narrowed down the list of potential buyers, those buyers conducted extensive diligence. Um, including site visits and dozens of calls with the potential buyer with our Kroger employees. To learn more about the Kroger business overall. So ultimately Kroger selected CNS as the buyer, the best buyer positioned to successfully operate the stores that we are agreeing to divest. As Roxy described, CNS is an industry leading wholesaler grocery supplier with providing. Uh, solutions in 7,500 independent supermarkets and military bases. CNS also has significant retail experience. It has its own operates franchise grocery stores in the Midwest, the Northeast and the Carolinas. CNS also provides a wide range of retail services such as retail development. Pricing, merchandising, marketing, advertising, technology, category management, pharmacy networks. And private label branding services. So this is similar to what Kroger's corporate offices provides to Fred Meyer right now. So to operate the divested businesses, CNS has a management team. With deep experience in grocery and retail, as Roxy talked about, including the former president of Stop and Shop supermarket chain. The former president of Shop Right supermarkets. The former executive vice president of merchandising for Stop and Shop Giant Food. And the former chief marketing and merchandising officer for Rite Aid, Giant Food and Ahold. Who owns Food Lion and Giant. And the former chief human, uh, human resources officer of Ahold and Shop and Stop. So, and of course, Roxy, as you've seen right now, has deep experience in the pharmacy business as she has described.
Great, thanks. Tony, anything that you wanted to add on that one?
Nothing to add, Dave.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question about that response? Um, in terms of the process for identifying potential buyers and the bidding review process? To what extent, if at all, was pharmacy explicitly called out in that?
On the whole process. Included in the whole process, yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to our sixth question, and this question is for CNS. Um, so what makes CNS confident that they can successfully operate hundreds of retail stores and pharmacies? And we have some specific sub questions here. Part one, what management personnel does CNS currently have dedicated to setting up and running the pharmacy business? Please describe their experience and background. Second, how will CNS ensure it has enough retail associates, pharmacists, pharmacy technicians and other frontline staff to operate the stores? And pharmacies on day one after the divestiture? And C, how does the new divestiture plan that was announced on April 22nd on Monday affect CNS's plans to operate pharmacies in Oregon?
Great question. So we always, we always learn from experience, right? Um, as a parent, I know I've learned from experience and I'd love to say I was 21 years old and starting my career, but I'm not. I've had 28 years of experience in doing this and in the healthcare ecosystem, which is really what lends itself to success is learning and understanding. And then seeking from others of great successes and being partners with Colleen and Tony in this business to understand the pros and cons and the ebbs and the flows that have happened. Right? So for us, we certainly want to be successful in these stores and we want to make sure that we have the parameters to do so in the divested stores and pharmacies. Given that we have over a century of experience, right? In the grocery business, it has a strong balance sheet on that side of it. It also has an experienced management team of individuals like myself who have hundreds of handled hundreds of transactions before. As previously discussed, CNS brought me on to run the pharmacies that we'll acquire from this transaction. Like I said, I have 28 years of experience in the industry, including senior positions at Walgreens and Rite Aid in all different areas. So understanding the whole ecosystem of pharmacy is really critical. And then also having the right key players in place. I've experienced with the PBMs, wholesalers, procurement, insurance plans and other parties of the prescription marketplace. And then I also recruited someone who I know in the industry with great success, who has a great reputation, Nicole Leiter, to help me lead the pharmacy team. As I, as mentioned, Nicole is an experienced pharmacist. She's an executive who has led Walgreens USA through its acquisition of Rite Aid. She's also led the largest transformation ever in the Walgreens history, which says a lot. Together Nicole and I have built plans, we work together well. And we want to look for ensuring the continuity of care of the patients during this transaction. And to continue to grow the CNS pharmacies business. We also want to do things differently, right? From learning in the industry and things that will resonate in the industry to be successful. And we also want to welcome retail associates, pharmacies, pharmacists, pharmacy technicians and all the other frontline staff. That is going to be divested over into the CNS family and the sellers. We also want to extend employment offers to all these individuals with competitive wages and packages. As I stated earlier, because this is critical to CNS and the frontline employees remain in place and in the role. That is inevitable to ensuring that continuity of care to these patients. And I can't say it enough, it's like, I think we're very grateful to have those folks there. And CNS is developing specific retention plans to make sure that they stay. And we're working closely with both Albertsons and Kroger. And as you asked about the change, um, the only thing that happens within the change, everything remains the same as far as continuity of care. Maintaining those programs that are currently involved at the stores that will remain the same. The only thing that will change was understanding the stores and the staffing and including them into our family and ensuring that we have a plan together. But it should be a seamless transition, whether we have 200 or we have 800. We're still going to look to work together with both Albertsons and Krogers to make this a success.
Thanks Roxanne. Um, I just want to make sure on the last part of that question, the new divestiture plan announced on April 22nd. Any effect on CNS's plans to operate pharmacies in Oregon?
No, it will remain the same. Our goal is to keep them open and to keep them, keep the continuity of care with the pharmacy staff, everything the same.
Thanks. Uh, all right, question seven. Uh, how will you minimize any negative impacts on smaller and rural communities? And populations that rely on pharmacies such as people with disabilities and older adults? And this question is for Kroger, Albertsons and CNS.
Thanks, Dave. Well, let me start by saying that I don't think there's going to be any negative impacts that we need to minimize. We're merging with Albertsons because we're committed to the grocery business and the pharmacy business. When we do mergers, we make things better. We cut prices, we invest to improve operations and the shopping experience at our, the stores that we acquire. And we invest in people. We've done that in the prior mergers and we're going to do that here. So unlike some of our competitors in the pharmacy business who are rapidly closing stores, creating. What some would call pharmacy deserts that Dan talked about in the beginning of this, of this call. We're very excited about the prospects for the grocery and the pharmacy business. You know, I understand and Kroger understands how critically important grocery stores and pharmacies are. Does someone have a question?
Just a reminder for folks to put themselves on mute. Thanks, Colleen, go ahead.
Yeah. Again, you know, Kroger understands how critically important grocery, grocery stores are to not only the communities, but particularly to smaller and rural communities. And they are a critical lifeline, we are, for customers, including people with disabilities and older adults. So that understanding shows up in our plans for Albertson's stores. We are, we are not some financial buyer looking to buy stores for the value of the real estate or to run up debt and strip out the assets. We want to provide our communities with fresh, affordable food that leads to healthier outcomes. We want to make a positive contribution as we have been doing on the communities in which we operate. So this is the mission of Kroger. This is the mission of Kroger Health and it is my mission.
Thanks, Colleen, and I, again, second, everything you're saying, it's great to work with you and the partnership has been well received on our side as well. And our primary objective is really to ensure the continuity of care for the patients again. This means we're extremely focused on making sure that the store operations remain unchanged, as I alluded to earlier. We have everything in place for the divested stores to continue the continuity of care. We also want to make sure that there's no negative impact for the patients. We're getting the information that we need. And we're also including, that includes all of those smaller rural communities. The prescriptions are going to be transferred over, the background history. And so they comment about patients with disability of older adults. Our goal is to maintain everything the way it is today. Again, in their mind, it should seem seamless to the, to them, the customer coming into our store should see that the pharmacist is the same. We'll also maintain and build upon the clinical services that are there today, hoping to offer additional services as well and think differently. Therapy management programs and other offerings that are in the store that are there today will continue to do that. We'll do everything possible to ensure the pharmacist and the pharmacy staff support remain in divested stores. So patients can continue to see the same pharmacist they know and they trust. I'm very familiar with problems facing rural communities and I'm committed to addressing those challenges at CNS and doing things differently than the large chains have done. This again is our opportunity to make change in the healthcare industry and partner together. We will work hard to maintain pricing for patients as well. And again, ensure that they see the same pharmacy staff.
Anything from Albertsons on this one?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tony. I, I would like to follow up briefly, Colleen, on your comment. I think I, I don't want to make, I don't want to unfairly characterize, but it felt like you were saying there shouldn't be any negative impacts. Are you planning for any negative impacts? Are you planning to mitigate any negative impacts or? That I don't want to make sure we're, we're not overstating what your, your initial response.
Yeah, I just think like Roxy said, it's just going to be seamless for customers that there were not, it's going to, the same pharmacist, same staff, it's going to be seamless. I don't expect any, anything negative. And we will always be ready to mitigate anything that may happen, but no, I don't, I just don't expect, I think things will be seamless. It'll be the same staff, they'll get the same services they've always gotten. You know, the relationship with the pharmacist is critical. I mean, I, I am a pharmacist, haven't been behind the counter in a little while, but you know, the relationships that I have with people, I still have. When I was behind the counter, I still have today and for years. So I think the importance of the relationship, the same, you know, the same people taking care of them, the same services offered. Is, is why I say I'm not going to expect any negative impact.
Thank you. All right, the next question is for Kroger and Albertsons as well. And how will the merged Kroger and Albertsons stores operations integrate their pharmacy operations? So, um, specific sub questions here. Will the merged company have centralized operations, use the same platforms, et cetera? Second, will certain tasks, for example, responding to customer service calls or processing automatic prescription refills? Be outsourced from local pharmacies to a central location? And third, will Kroger and Albertsons pharmacies continue to contract with the same pharmacy benefit managers they currently do? Including in the case of Albertsons, Express Scripts?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. So from the Kroger and Albertson's side, our integration planning efforts are still ongoing. But I can share with you right now where our plans stand. So from a centralized operations and platform, it is a priority for us to move to the same platform. So that patients can go to any pharmacy owned by Kroger. Or so any Fred Meyer or Safeway and have their prescription filled seamlessly. But our timetable for that is still to be determined, we're working on that. We have not yet finalized plans as to which operations will be centralized and how that will occur. But what we can expect, the functions like training, systems management, contracting, procurement. That will be centralized and allow, um, really for the Kroger owned pharmacies and really regardless of any banner, that will be, that will be centralized. So that's always too for the best of the people in the store so they can better serve our patients. Outsourcing from local pharmacies into a central location. It, it might be helpful to start by telling you about, a little bit about how we operate Fred Meyer pharmacies today. So first and foremost, most importantly, we prioritize customer service and direct patient care. So we understand that our patients are looking for trusted relationships, reliability with their pharmacy providers. So our pharmacists and technicians are available. Each hour that we're open, answer questions to provide health guidance, which supports patient adherence. Um, and different programs like vaccinations that result in overall better health outcomes. Um, second, we save customers money by centralizing certain activities that are behind the scenes and, and they don't impact the patient care. So examples include work we've done to make it easier to reorder prescriptions, refills through Fred Meyer mobile app. Or to be notified when prescriptions are ready to be picked up via text and things that make it easier for our customers. So this frees up our pharmacist to spend more time with people at the counter, interacting with them. And less time on, on taking phone calls in addition to keeping costs down overall for our patients and our grocery customers. Um, I want to emphasize that even if we centralize certain operations, patients will continue to be able to reach their local pharmacist. Or technician that they may want to talk to whenever they need them. Um, today we do use central fill locations for some of our pharmacies. And we will continue to do that after the merger. Using central fill allows prescriptions to be filled outside, off, off site, very, very efficiently, very accurately. While our pharmacy teams can focus on the services like filling acute prescriptions, counseling patients. Medicare, medication therapy management services that Roxy talked about, vaccinations and really providing overall care. Um, as really each state and the state of Oregon allows us to do. While patients can always reach their local pharmacist, we will often have, we also have a centralized call center that we have today. If they wish to give us feedback, provide feedback at any time. So from a PBM perspective, we have no plans to change, uh, the PBMs that we work with or the insurance networks that we participate in Oregon. Uh, before the transaction closes, we don't have access to Albertson's contracts with Express Scripts right now or any of their contracts. But we do expect Albertson's to continue its current contract with Express Scripts. We would be happy to enter into a new contract with Express Scripts after that contract expires if we can reach an agreement on fair terms.
Great, and Tony, you probably knew I'd be asking you this question, anything more that you want to add?
No, thank you, I defer to Colleen's statement.
All right, thanks. Uh, all right, uh, uh, next question. How will patients, customers of the merged and divested stores be notified of changes to their pharmacy? Included changes to branding, ownership, services or accepted insurance? Um, how long before any changes will take effect will patients, customers be notified? Um, and what support will you offer patients, customers to navigate any changes? And this question is for Kroger, Albertsons and CNS.
Thanks, Dave, it's a really important question. So from the Kroger, Albertson's side, we're developing transition plans with CNS right now to ensure that all existing services, contracts continue seamlessly. For our customers and the patients for the near term. Over the longer term, we will take the same approach that we take today when there are changes to patient care and availability. We notify patients as early as possible to provide as much clarity as possible about changes and changes that affect them. Our commitment is always to provide as much transparency and clarity, uh, to our customers and our patients as we possibly can. And we're confident that CNS shares that same commitment with us.
And we are, Colleen, thank you. We're working hard that on day one is, Colleen alluded to, again, is the transition of care, right? Making sure we understand today, the operations in stores and the hours are assumed that they will continue to grow and be the same. Assuming the operation of the divested stores, our goal is really not to change any of the patients pharmacy experiences. We'll maintain existing in-store pharmacy operations practices, including hours of operation. And the current pharmacists that are ready, our customers know and trust will be there in place. We also look to maintain and build upon the clinical services that are already in place today and on day one have them in place. We also have the support of Kroger and Albertsons through the transitional service agreement to ensure patient pharmacy experiences remain unchanged. To the extent that anything will change, CNS will use existing marketing material channels to promptly notify patients of changes. Ensure that all patients are given ample notification of any modifications to their pharmacy experiences or services. We're really committed to the patients and any changes that arrive during the integration process. We're actually standing up a day one command center to provide high touch support for all customers, pharmacy and beyond. This is really our way to get information from the patients. This support will be coupled with additional staff in the stores for pharmacies to mitigate any unexpected challenges upfront with our partners. Anything that could happen that is controllable or uncontrollable, we want to hear about it. We have robust, robust systems, plans in place to proactively identify and remedy any integration changes. If anything happens, we will use the day one command center and communication back and forth. Additionally, the TSA services are there for this reason. And I look forward to partnering again with both Albertson and Kroger.
Right, thanks.
Can I ask a quick follow up here, Dave? I, I just want to push a little bit, um, I think on what Roxanne was saying about ample time. Is there anything you can share in terms of sort of current standard practices or operating processes on what that means in, in terms of a timeline?
Can you clarify a little bit more what you want?
Yeah, you said you'd notify patients with ample, ample time. What does ample mean? Is that a week, what, a month, what is sort of a standard operating ample time?
Yeah, great question. It depends on, currently today, we're working on all of those services and each of the integrations that need to be put in place. I don't have an answer to each one of those because there are specific answers to each question. So an example would be if a patient has to be notified of changes in the pharmacy hours. We would make sure that there's ample time and that ample time is being defined currently today by both teams. So again, we have standard of care being the same upfront on day one. So we're ready and prepared to take on everything that Albertson and Kroger has today. Trying to mitigate any risk and business continuity of care is important.
Great, thank you.
Sarah, can I ask one follow up more on? Sarah, can I ask one follow-up more on that? I think as those decisions will be made, Roxanne, will that be posted somewhere publicly? I get that there is a lot of different ways, but sort of, Sarah planned to sort of post those sorts of things publicly?
Yep. We have a team working on that together, again, with the divested stores and the leadership team, creating those opportunities and making sure what the message and standardization of those are. So yes, we're working together on that to post publicly and to post through emails, notifications, letters. Again, all of those things that are currently happening today, we want to make sure that those patients are getting the same information in the same way. So we do have a team dedicated to doing that.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Diana, back to you, I think.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, Sarah, Dave, you are done with the questions and follow-ups? Thank you so much, everybody. Really appreciate the questions and the conversation. Jen, if we could pull up the next slide. The time we have now, the remaining time is dedicated to public testimony. And so what I wanted to share a little bit about the public testimony. As a reminder, we can go to the next slide. If you want to provide public testimony, please chat the host. A number of you have been chatting me, which is fine, but if I'm going to be watching, really facilitating this piece. So if you can chat the host, that would be great if you haven't already. Here's what we invite folks to share with us today. And again, I'll share some other ways people can provide public testimony. But any hopes or concerns about the merger, whether you feel in support or oppose it? If you want to share any experiences as a pharmacy customer or employee of Kroger, Albertsons, any information about how you think the merger might impact you and your community, or how you think the merger might affect access to prescriptions in Oregon? We go to the next slide. Just a variety, invite a variety of input from you. Again, if you'd like to make a comment, you can, oh, you can chat, you can either chat the host or you can go to Stacy DeLong as well. She's on the list and she is collecting the list. I will call your name, and when I call your name, please make sure you're unmuted and speak clearly into your mic. Please state your name, your affiliation, if you have any that you want to share, and/or if there's any relationship with Kroger, Albertsons, or CNS. To try to get as much input as possible, we're going to keep, we're going to ask everybody to do two minutes or less for your comment. We're going to have a little timer, I think, in the corner. And I will also, if you don't, if for some reason that doesn't work, I'll be timing them and asking folks to wrap up as we get to two minutes. You can also submit public comment by putting it in the chat, and we can share it that way as well. So you can put it in the chat to the host, and if you want me to read something, I'm happy to do that. Just please indicate that. And then if we go to the next slide, these are other ways to, these are other ways to submit public comment. We want to make sure folks have that opportunity. And let me just say a few other things about public comment. So the Community Review Board and the Oregon Health Authority are here to listen. This means that nobody's going to respond in real time to what folks share in public comment nor attempt to fix or resolve the question or concern that we bring up today. And so even though the Health Authority and the CRB aren't responding today, they will be considering your comments. So the Community Review Board, as well as the Oregon Health Authority, gets these public comments. This meeting is being recorded. As I say, we have, there's a way to email, there's a way to call and leave a voicemail. You can, as I say, also put it in the chat. So the other thing is if we hear comments that are not that correct, that are inaccurate, we will not correct inaccurate statements that are shared as fact. The CRB and the Health Authority, we are all here to listen with the careful attention, respect, and honor that all of you deserve as you come forward to share public input today. Your public testimony is meant to provide a voice and perspective from the individual. Providing a public testimony, it is not a representation of the Oregon Health Authority. Couple more things, and then I'm going to turn, I'm going to start reading names. The public comments may be used in the Oregon Health Authority's reports and publications. And if you like when you make your public comment, you're welcome to put your video on so we can see you if you like. But please do keep your video off if the remainder of the meeting to help reduce bandwidth issues. So again, OHA may follow up to questions in writing if people pose questions. OHA could request additional written information from the entities based on the public comment. I don't think we're going to have this problem, but if for some reason we think we're going to run out of time, I want to remind folks that there's different ways to provide public comment. And we can also, the Health Authority actually has, could schedule a separate listening session to hear public comment if that's necessary. But so far, given the number we have, I think we should be okay. So with that, I'm going to start going down the list of folks who have signed up. And again, I think we'll have this two-minute, this little timer. Oh, look at that. That's a big timer. And we will start with Senator Suzanne Weber, please, Senator. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's nice being here. I want to relate an experience I had at a pharmacy just recently, and it was at the Safeway Pharmacy, which I have always used. I had had surgery and I needed two prescriptions. I got to the pharmacy and I was number seven in line to be helped. I waited in that line for an hour and a half, only to get to the window and have the pharmacist say, "I'm sorry, I can't help you. I'm closing." But Fred Meyer doesn't close for another 10 minutes, and I'll bet you can make it there. And of course I couldn't. I was in the middle of the store. I had to get to the car. I had to drive a mile and a half and then go into the store. And of course, they weren't going to be able to help me. He said, "Otherwise, you can come back here at 11 o'clock tomorrow morning." So I had no choice. I had no other pharmacy to go to in order to get the prescriptions that I needed because of the surgery I had had. The next day, I came back at 11 o'clock, and I waited. I was number seven in line again. And the line never got to less than seven. And after an hour, I finally had my prescriptions. What I want to know from you is, are you going to increase the full-time employees? Or are you going to continue to have part-time employees, being the way you commit to business? Are you going to support family living wages? The other thing I want to know is, usually when, when people come together to make something that they think is going to be wonderful, instead, they end up increasing the price to consumers. I have a trust issue with the way you're going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Weber. I next have Anita Redheart. Anita?
Hello. My name is Anita Redheart, and I live in Tillamook, Oregon. My question is, are you folks going to be honoring Safeway's contract with Cigna, which is the prescription medication company that is with Medicare? And if not, are you going to be giving people that are on Medicare/Medicaid a chance to be able to do something about being able to get their prescriptions without being charged? As I was almost recently charged, I have COVID, and I'm a surviving cancer patient, but I am terminal. So getting COVID is extremely, extremely dangerous for me. I was going to be charged $1,667 in change for my medication. I don't even make $1,000 a month on my disability. So I'm hoping very much that the Safeway pharmacies will still be able to continue being in network with Cigna through Medicare. Can you give me some information on how that will work?
Anita, thank you so much for your testimony. As I mentioned, we won't have folks answering the questions today, but the Oregon Health Authority and the Community Review Board were taking all of this input, and it may result in additional questions for the entities as well as for the Health Authority. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Kyle Connaughton.
Thank you. I can't get my video to work. I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Kyle Connaughton. I'm the pharmacy director at Tillamook Hospital with Adventist Health. And my comment is, I just don't see how OHA could make an approval of this merger without knowing the list of divested stores, because here in Tillamook, we have exactly two pharmacies in town. It's the Fred Meyer and the Safeway. So how can you decide without knowing if we're going to be divested or not? We would need the Safeway to become CNS. That's not negotiable. I want to talk about our experience last summer when our local independent pharmacy sold its business to Kroger and how that merger went. Because Kroger did not keep that pharmacy open. They closed it immediately, creating great difficulty for the community, especially in the first several months. But continuing today, as you hear from Anita and Senator Weber, we've got long wait times for new prescriptions, including antibiotics for infections and other acute medications. And that brings prescription refugees back to the hospital, right? Imagine, and Senator Weber had the perfect story, and Anita too, there. Kroger has then failed to contract with several PBMs that serve this community, like Express Scripts, or I think WellCare is the next one I've heard of, which just shows and demonstrates the commitment to serving all patients in the community is just not. It's just not 100%. Besides the patient impact, the Kroger's decisions in that pharmacy takeover less than a year ago created a lot of difficulties for all the healthcare providers in the community, including, I'll say, the workers in their own pharmacy, who I'm sure, you know, struggled a lot and felt terrible, unable to provide, you know, decent care to their patients. So with that in mind, I would ask, please, OHA not approve until you know who's going to be divested. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, for your comment. Jim, I see your hands up. I'm going to, I will add you to the list for public comment. Thank you. So now, next on the list is E. Kohler.
Hi, I'm pharmacist with Safeway. I used to work in a rural area, and then I moved to Carvalis. Concerns are that Kroger let a couple of my pharmacy friends let go. They weren't pharmac, for younger pharmacists, and that the staff pharmacists were probably at 32 hours versus 40. There's a technician shortage, so I'm unclear how the, both CNS and Kroger's can fulfill those obligations for this merger. Without knowledge of divested stores, this is problematic, as the Tillamook manager said. I'm concerned about pharmacy deserts because Connaughton Falls, for instance, is becoming one, and Carvalis could become another one. As far as employees, I'm not sure. Everything is too big, and I think they need to put their cards on the table. And I'm worried about the customers, especially the underserved populations in rural and in our area. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Holly, Hollywood?
Hi, thank you. So I live in Florence, and I just wanted to reiterate the comments others have made in terms of access. So in the last couple of years, we lost Bymart Pharmacy and we lost Rite Aid Pharmacy. So now we only have a small independent, and then we have Safeway and we have Fred Meyer. And the problem is, is that Florence, you know, has 10,000 people. We have a, like, the population of Florence is older. There's more people using prescriptions or taking prescriptions. Outlying communities come to Florence to get prescriptions, like Mapleton, Reed's Port recently lost its last retail pharmacy. And so the hospital had to, had to help the community and open, you know, scramble sort of to open a retail-style pharmacy within the hospital. You know, and as my experience and my family's experience has been long wait lines, you know, pharmacies not having the medication, you know, just, it's hard for people to go to a pharmacy and take two hours of their day to wait in line to get their prescription. And so I would be very, very concerned that we could lose Safeway, or we could lose Fred Meyer as part of the merger. And it would be even, you know, we'd have even less access to care. We're sort of in, as someone else mentioned, a desert. Like, it's not just pharmacy that's hard to access here. It's all sorts of healthcare. And I would hate to see the pharmacy access suffer as a result of a merger. So I would also be highly interested to know which pharmacies are going to be divested or which stores are going to be divested. And, and, you know, we talked about timelines a little bit earlier, like giving community members appropriate time to figure out, like, how are they going to get their prescriptions? Like, how do you make this work? Do you go to mail order? You know, how do you, how do you work it out? So I'd like to keep the people and the communities in mind when we talk about a merger. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, very much. Tim Camp. Tim? Tim, are you still with us? We'll come back. How about, let me see, is Lori C. here? She was going to come back at 2:30. Lori?
Yes, my name is Lori. For full disclosure, I'm a Carvalis city councillor. I can say that Kroger fired all of the staff pharmacists full-time, hired part-time pharmacists, and the lines are out throughout the store. Every day I go into Kroger, it's awful. That's from constituents of mine. I would like to know, if a store is not profitable after the merger for CNS, what is your prospect for closing? Will the pharmacists and technicians be at the same or higher pay level with same or higher benefits? I'm concerned about living wage jobs leaving Carvalis. CNS also said Rite Aid and Walgreens were wonderful pharmacies. My constituents do not like Rite Aid or Walgreens. We are very concerned that one or two Safeway stores would be closed. And I'm concerned, as a councillor, not speaking as a councillor, though, that it will impact the community as a whole. I am vehemently against this because it will impact the neediest people in our community, the Medicare and Medicaid populations, and I do not see anything on the table on the continuity of care. And as someone said, their cards on the table. And I, at this point, until more details can come out, I do not agree to this merger as a person. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lori. Jim, you had your hand up to provide public testimony?
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for allowing the public to give public comment. And this is a very, when it comes to people's health, it gets very serious very quickly. And I, to listen to the presentations, I was taken aback by how quickly they went through a very complicated scenario and not taking in consideration that the average person really doesn't probably understand the width and breadth of the issue. The number one thing that I wanted to express is, if we have the corporization of pharmacies in Oregon, will it lower our costs and increase service, or will our costs go up and have less service? All indications show, in Tillamook, where I'm from, that our prices will go up and our services will be diminished. Safeway, you cannot get the phone to tell you whether or not your prescription is ready. There are people in wheelchairs and other mobility devices in line in the store for at least an hour to get their prescriptions. The Fred Meyer is remodeling at this point, which none of us knew that was going to happen. The drive-through is closed, and the staff in both stores seem to be very stressed and overworked. There's just not enough people there to help and take care of business. Once again, thank you so much for allowing me to participate. This, there are many, many more questions and answers. I hope that the advisory board will take everything in consideration seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to give Tim Camp another, Tim, are you, are you here, Tim Camp? Okay, David Ladwig, I see your hand up. And go for it, David.
I, yeah.
I, uh, I live in a small town west of Corvallis, and there's one community pharmacy. And I'm concerned not only for the current people getting their service from, uh, Safeway or, or Albertson's, uh, or one of the merger or divested your partners, but you mentioned the relationships you have with pharmacy benefit man, uh, pharmacy benefit managers, and also I assume some directly with, uh, pharmaceutical manufacturers. Do you have exclusionary pricing deals with any of those PBMs that aids in putting small community pharmacies out of business? I mean, I like to be able to go into my pharmacy. I, I've never had to wait more than five minutes to get my prescription filled. I've never had more than one call back to see if my prescription's ready. Is that part of the consideration of OHA and, and HICMO? Not only to look out for the interests of the corporate entities, or the current patients of those corporate entities, but to look for community pharmacy owners and managers, and the people that would prefer to, to get their services there. And this, this may have just stuck in my head, but I think I heard someone talk about high-tech and high-touch command centers. And, and if I heard that, like, God forbid, that's, that's a lot of what's wrong with, with corporate mergers. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Tim Camp, this is your last call for Tim Camp. Um, and again, this is, we're gonna have one more, uh, public comment is what we have. If, again, if you, um, want to, want to provide oral public comment, now's your opportunity to do so. Um, and again, there's opportunity for written comment as well as voicemail. You can also put, um, public comment in the chat if anybody wants me to read that, um, we'll, we'll, we invite that as well. So, um, Elizabeth, you've asked to be added to the queue again, so I will go ahead and, uh, give you the opportunity, uh, to provide your public comment again.
Hi, Dana. Sorry, I get really nervous testifying.
Okay.
One question I had was that, um, CNS seems to not, I called, uh, CNS Corporation and asked, do any piggly wiggly's have pharmacies in them? Could not get an answer. So my question is, how can CNS start managing these pharmacies on a district level when they have not had experience with this, with state or Albertsons? And I don't see how it can be seamless. Kroger does not have full-time 40-hour staff pharmacists. They only have the managers being full-time. That's going to reduce customer service and access to prescriptions. Um, and if a store is not profitable, what is the timeline for closing it? Again, um, I saw that happen with Hagan's. I've seen this as bigger. However, this is a different market. And my question, if a store is not profitable with the grocery and/or the pharmacy, what is the timeline for CNS to close them or at Kroger to close them? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That, um, is the end of our, the folks have, um, public comment. We are gonna keep the meeting open until 2 o'clock, just in case folks filter in at the end, because we are, I'm sorry, till 3 o'clock, because we're scheduled to go until 3, and so some people may be, um, joining, like, you know, may have thought, oh, I can come submit public comment at 2:45. So we're gonna keep the meeting open. Um, but here's what I'd like to do. Jen, can we pull up, um, the slides? If we go to that, what happens next, um, just 'cause, and, and again, we'll, we'll keep the meeting open, but do you wanna share this? So what's happening next? Next slide, please. Um, so there, OHA still has review to do. Um, there's some information requests, um, out there, then getting responses from the entities. The Community Review Board will be making a recommendation to the Health Authority. And the Health Authority is continuing to monitor other state and federal antitrust actions. We go to the next slide. Um, just as an FYI, the Community Review Board meetings are public meetings. Again, you can find this information and agendas and meeting notes, all that stuff, from, on the, uh, on the, on the website. And then if we go to the, just the last slide, and again, these, you can sign up, and the slides are on the website too. You can sign up to receive email updates, go visit the website, um, email or voicemail. So, again, we're gonna stay here and, um, continue to welcome public comment, um, if, if there is some. I have Anita Redheart, who would like to, um, come back. And so, Jen, let's pull that up. Let's pull that up, the, that timer again. And, um, I just, uh, I have a, I do have a question, and, uh, maybe we can put it in the chat. The deadline for submitting written comments, is there a deadline? Sarah, I don't know if you can speak to this, or Jenny, or Stacy?
I can jump in real quick here. We are happy to accept public comment at any point while we are doing the review. I think in terms of comments for today's public hearing, that would be, um, something the Community Review Board is looking at. We'd like to see that before the next, on May 9th, but the HICMO program will accept public comment about this transaction while we are undergoing review, um, until it ends.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go to, um, Anita Redheart.
Hi, I just wanted to make two real quick statements. If we are not able to stay with Cigna through at least one of the stores for our prescription, we will be forced to either have to pay out of pocket to switch to a different program with our Medicare, which many of us cannot afford, or we will have to drive as far as Hillsborough, Beaverton, those areas which are about an hour and a half away at minimum. And there's a hill, a very dangerous hill, every direction out of Tillamook, so it's gonna, it's gonna cause quite a problem. So, that's all I had. Thank you very much for letting me speak again.
Thank you, Anita. Lori C., I see your hand up. And then I, I do also want to call people's, um, attention in the chat, where you can see the link to meeting information materials and recor- recordings. Um, please, go ahead, Lori.
Uh, yeah, um, dovetailing to prior comments from the Tillamook Hospital, um, not losing any insurance capability, Medicaid, Medicare, um, Medicare Advantage plans, because any impact, we have a high poverty level in Lynn Benton and Lincoln County. And if you guys change PBMs, or change your benefits, and not carry those insurance or not provide, that will be a significant health impact to the Medicaid and Medicare populations, as well as those people that cannot afford a health insurance plan. And I have high concerns that unless we know what insurances are gonna be accepted at the new stores under CNS and in the, the merge stores, um, it's a, it's going to be very difficult, because the medic, the elderly population will be significantly impacted. They cannot pivot quickly. And the Medicaid population may not have transportation options. And if you have to drive an hour and a half, as Anita had said, that is out of a lot of people's wheelhouse, and they will not be able to get their medications. And so I, again, have high concerns without all the information being available on what PBMs and the insurances they will be taking, if they're dropping any, and what stores are closing. I think everyone who's commented has significant concerns about this merger, and I would appreciate the Oregon Health Authority try to get this information out to the public, so that the public knows what's gonna be the impact at least three months before the merger is completed, if it goes forward. Thank you very much for your time again.
Thank you, Lori. And I just, I wanna, um, so here's what's gonna happen. We are gonna, we can take that down, Jen, and if you would put up Slide 21, the public comments slide, that would be fantastic. So here's what we're gonna do. As I shared, we are going to keep the meeting open until 3 o'clock, um, to receive additional public comment is, if there is any. If you wanna stick around for the potential additional public comment, you are welcome to. Actually, Jen, uh, 22 would be great. Thank you. Um, if you wanna stick around for the, for potential additional comment, please do. If not, you are free to leave and enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Um, again, we'll be here. Want to thank, um, everybody for their participation today. Um, the representatives of, um, Kroger and Albertson's and CNS. I wanna thank the folks who came and gave public comment, and, um, you all were so good about sticking to those two minutes, and we really wanna appreciate that. Um, as well as the staff of the Oregon Health Authority, who helped to pull it all together, and especially to the members of the Community Review Board, who convened this public hearing. So with that, as I say, we're not really ending the meeting, 'cause we're gonna stick around till 3. But again, if you, um, don't, uh, need to hear the additional potential, uh, public comment, you're free to leave, and, but we're gonna stay, um, just in case. Thanks, everybody, so much. What we really need is some music to play, but I'm never successful with that when I try. So, you can hum, um, or listen to music in your office, but we'll, we'll be here until 3 o'clock. Thanks, everyone. Okay, folks, it is 2:59. So we are going to wrap up this public hearing from the health authority and the community review board. Again, I wanna thank everybody for joining us today. Thank the community review board, the Oregon Health Authority, the representatives from Kroger's, Albertsons and CNS. I hope you all have a great afternoon. Thank you so much and be well. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.